Okay, the meeting in order. Pursuant to number four healers, March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-three revised order suspending certain provisions. The opening law GLG thirty-eight section A P meetings of the verticals regional school district. School committee will be conducted both in person and remote through March thirty first, two thousand twenty-five. Agenda items listed as reasonably anticipated by the chair, not all items listed in that we discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by C G S B, the school committee recorder. And it is also being recorded by the virtual edge of virtual evil. Start off with superintendent's report.
Okay, I think we'll jump right into the roses and thorns with a little focus on the on the start of school. Two things I'm really excited about the the. It's one thing to have that extra thirty-eight parking spots put in. It's another thing to be there at arrival and dismissal and see it in action. I think it's really working out. There are many empty spots now at. Money and and parents and staff are taking advantage of it, so I think we we did a really good thing.
For the bottlenecks have been kind of elevated in those bottlenecks.
Right, with the turning lanes.
Should we go to name it the Jason St. Peter?
No, right here. The field's uh right here.
Maybe the floor of the ground.
But I mean.
I started.
Yeah.
Well, you both have listened to all of us complain about that for ten years.
Really big wins. I'm super excited about that. And then there's one point where there's like a pedestrian crossing and I think we're still waiting for flashing additional flashing lights. To do that, so that's really good. And then the other thing, it's early and I don't want to jinx it. But the personal electronics stuff seems to be off to a good start. So special thanks to teachers and other staff and principals and assistant principals for rolling that out thoughtfully. And and in two weeks, there will be issues, but but two days in. So Cynthia, could you come up and share a couple of things and you gotta go up to the front or next to Jason? Just for the microphone.
Oh, okay. Hi, sorry. Thank you.
And Jake, you're on you're on deck and Christopher, you're in the hole.
And so we had a really successful start to the school year. Prior to the start of our school year, we did have a backpack giveaway in on Main Street in Great Barrington outside of the Mason Library. We had about twenty-six backpacks were donated by the West Dock Bridge Conservational Church. All of them were gone before four thirty. So that was super successful. We saw lots of families. It was great to connect with them. Up front and the librarian, the children's librarian was with us and she was giving away candy. So it was just a really nice connection because actually every family that had come had not been into the library before. So we're really working on those community relationships. That was wonderful. We had a great first day. I did have a tea and tissues, which is if you're a parent of a kindergartner and you're dropping them off the first time, you might cry, but I will report that nobody except for a baby cried in our tea and tissues. But it was it was really nice. It was about a dozen parents who came. And we had they had opportunities to ask questions, give feedback. It said I was super positive and it was. It's a really nice way. It was a really nice way to start. My only thorn is that we're still not fully staffed for paraprofessionals and for my administrative assistant. And that really does, you know, put a lot of workload on the staff that are there. It impacts recess coverage, lunch coverage. And our other front office staff. But because of that meeting that we had the tea and tissues, we are going to build up a robust volunteer program this year, which is really great. And so hopefully we can, you know, have that be the catalyst to getting parents into our schools and interacting with the staff and the other kids.
Great, thanks so much.
Good evening, everybody. A pleasure to be here as usual. Nice to see everyone. I had a mentor when I was an assistant principal, he used to tell me, you have to be as flexible as water if you want to survive as a principal. And we had a lot of liquid people for the first couple of days. I had to boy, so many people who just had great can-do attitudes and and in every corner of the staff and our families and our students, and we had a wonderful opening. Would like to thank Ellie Rizzo and Jordan Lane, who's our new school counselor, and Deborah Spence, who is a part of our office team that works with the counselor. And our exploratory teachers for really, we are, one of our thorns is just we're struggling to get our exploratory rotation to actually work and be satisfactory to everybody involved, our clients and the people who teach our clients. And they have done a lot of work over the last week to try to make that work. And some things we didn't realize were not particularly workable until we saw them in action. So again, a lot of flexibility and nice work there. I'd like to thank Julie and our office team for being welcoming to everybody during a really busy days, stressful days for families and for kids. At the end of today, I had seen zero mobile telephones out in the school, honest to goodness. I saw a student yesterday, I was hanging out in the back parking lot and saw a student with a phone in their back pocket. And I did like a triple take because I had not seen one the entire day. And and that's, you know, to me, that's a testament to our staff for enforcing the role. It's a testament to our students for doing what we're asking them to do. And it's a testament to their families for supporting that notion at home and talking about why it's important that we're doing this. Students being back is just wonderful. I've seen a hundred examples of young people being gracious, being good to each other, being good neighbors and and really understanding that they are living and working in a community. And it's really special to see and it's impressive to see. Thorns, will you continue with some tweaks to our exploratory schedule to make it work and be as beneficial as it can be for everybody? And like Cynthia and probably Christopher, we are also in need of several paraprofessionals. And some highly specialized paraprofessionals for our programs. So that's it. Thank you.
Do those announcements go out in newsletters?
That we are looking.
Yeah.
Yes.
They do, okay.
Yes, yeah, we would really love it if we could. Yeah, good idea, and we'll continue to do that.
Yeah, great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm first sitting at the front of the table, but I didn't want to appear adversarial or. Thanks for having me, Roses. Roosters. Well, I didn't raise it, but thank you. You shake that. I have a present one, too. We had a great beginning of the week. We started off the week, obviously, with two professional development days. Accomplished a lot and including our start, the beginning of our work on instruction. Teachers met in departments to discuss syllabi, departmental things, regular rating, et cetera. Conversations are just starting, but it was really fantastic to start that on the first day. This work has only just begun. We're glad it's off the ground. Teachers also met in their instructional lead groups to begin discussing instructional rounds, the instructional rounds, what we'll be doing throughout the year. These are only informed improvements in instruction. They're not meant to be divisive towards other teachers. They're meant to understand what's happening in our instruction, in our ability to improve our own practice. I, you know, just got here, but it really feels like and frankly, I've been given a lot of feedback that staff are invigorated, positive about the focus on instruction. Starting on day one, so that's great. There are a lot of freshmen coming in for a welcome address at tours on Tuesday because staff are in the building. They're available to say hello, to introduce themselves. With counselors on hand for scheduling questions or challenges. The strong turnout, I think, was proof that this was needed and appreciated. It was really great. Yesterday, we had a start, a smooth start with students. Day one is always packed with small problems. The things went very well. Many staff reported that they felt that it was a positive start to the year. The administrative team has met with each class as of today, each grade. And showing off a few handbook items, which include attendance, tips for success, our expectations for treating everyone with respect, how to get more support, and of course, the ever popular new procedures on cell phones. Lots of hard questions there. The good news is that we have seen very few cell phones. We have seen a few, though, Dr. McCandless. Electronic devices. We decided that what we were going to do is we were going to let them know and we get, and of course, they add. There was communication at home, but we let them know on the announcements on day one in the morning. And but we knew that we weren't really, really going to start enforcing it until we met with all the classes, which happened today. So a soft start to the cellphone conversation. Beginning errors for those who want to see if we really mean what we say. So no laughs on that one.
Freshman orientation, I mean, she says, everybody go look at your cellphone devices and the kids will just like.
There was a time long ago when I was an assistant principal with two other assistant principals at a large school and we call ourselves, this was a different day, but we call ourselves the iPod Squad. It's something like this all the time. Anyway. We had a fire drill today, went very smooth. We have a few procedures cleaned up that will decrease the time, but we'll work on that. We'll make sure that we get a very good time. We have everything else safely. Students have been great, positive, respectful, responsive, and it's a joy, of course, to see so many of them in education after school activities. Don't really have much in the way of thorns and, you know, I was trying to come up with some things and I met with the assistant principals after me and they were just like. Okay, so what we can possibly anticipate is cell phones, we kind of have thorns. We are anxiously waiting to see what the future has in store for us. And then this is the one school where there really wasn't an enforced policy, right? If not everyone, virtually everybody, that's where. So it's the biggest change. It's the biggest change, that's right. Yeah, that's right. And it's not just the phones, but it's, you know, the earbuds, because they're so, I mean, wherever you go, you see kids with white buds in their ears, you know, so. Yeah, okay, there. Our messaging is about, you know, teaching and learning and focus and all the good things that happen a lot, so. A sort of thorn is that I sort of realized, oh, we don't have a student rep. Or after the student rep was, and it turns out that student is living in Italy right now, so they're not able to be here today. First student rep, and I hope to have a student rep here for next meeting. Okay, great. Questions, comments? Thank you. So again, we'll light list through members that are next meeting. About one grant approval, so this is a grant through the Tides Foundation, but through Next Nourish and Learning Challenges. This is a teacher initiated one, valid at the high school, wrote and and received this. And it's to support some school visits to a trip down to some schools in Kentucky. So I think it's always great to get out of out of our own place to see what other schools are doing. The amount is thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, and I recommend you.
Much improved. Second discussion. I have one member online who's joined us, Diane, so let's go. Roll call. Bill vote.
Hi.
Diane's not here. Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Phil.
Yes.
Diane.
She said yes.
Okay. Cory.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, great. So then I have one other one, and this is unfortunate. I'm sorry about it. This is a request to increase the adult lunch price from four dollars to five dollars. This is not something that I particularly want to recommend. But we're obligated to do it based on the federal adult meal pricing guidelines. Not a ton of people, staff or faculty eat lunch, but a small number do and and the feds are telling us to raise the. When was the last time it was raised? So it might have been raised from three dollars to four dollars and now it's four to five. It's still a really good deal.
You can't get a five dollar lunch in a southern version.
And it's not far off from what other schools, public schools are charging.
So, so the second, second, a motion by Bill, second by Bill, any discussion?
Is there anything else we could do to offset the dollar change? It's such a small amount.
No, the it has to be higher than the federal reimbursement rate for food meals. And that is at four fifty-seven right now, so.
I think we may get five, but find a way to subsidize that.
We lose about twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars a year on lunches, we did.
There's no way to, we can't subsidize through the food service now. So it's not really, it has, again, it has to be at least four fifty-seven, so that's out of our control. So we're just recommending that be five dollars.
Yeah, we make it four seventy-five, it'll drive people crazy. Four ninety-nine.
It's all that tonic now. No, no, no.
Our motion is the second, roll call, Bill.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane. Cory.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
And I, two names.
So the next one, and this is a little bit in reverse order, so I'm sorry about that, for shared context last time. We are reflecting on our successes and areas for growth in the previous district improvement plan, so twenty-one to twenty-four. In a better context, and we'll commit to doing this going forward, we'll start to check in on our district improvement plan. Probably quarterly. What I did is I took the old plan and I essentially wrote for, sorry. Three questions for each of the three areas of the district improvement plan. So the first question were, where do we have some level of success? Where did we struggle, fail, have areas for growth, and then do you have any additional insights? And and that was for each of the three, and then the final one was just sort of overarching stuff. So in in person, people, and it'll be in our packet tomorrow or Monday, but people have the raw data. And and then what I did on top of that was I tried to briefly summarize the raw data. Because it's a little hard to to read through it all and make sense of it. By the very nature of summarizing it, there's a possibility I missed something, so that's why there are the two documents, the raw data and the other stuff. This data said it was really directed at at school committee members and administrators in the district who were here when that was going on. So I did pull Jake and Christopher because they're in their context, right? Also, this was all anonymous. So let me, I think, talk through the the summary, because I think that's the most informative part. And and for people who are paying attention at home, I'll work through it. I also like to recognize we got a really large number of people attending, so there some combination of parents, staff, community members, like, I don't know who everybody is, but thirty-five people in this meeting, which is really wonderful. So thank you for making the time to do that Thursday night. So from the first goal was around work with portrait of a graduate and proficiencies. And and what was positive. So one thing that came up was how that frame, how we use our time and resources and our focus on historically marginalized students were seen as successes. People thought stacking student engagement around this work were seen as successes. In many areas, there were draft competencies and proficiencies, and again, there was a decent amount of community outreach. And people appreciated the professional development for educators on assessment. The other side of the coin is some folks wish this was shared more widely, was more visible and accessible. That it wasn't clear we worked past delays, particularly the very beginning of the district and this three years of the district improvement plan that overlapped with with COVID. Some folks have concerns about going deeper into making connections between the portrait of the graduate and the curriculum, and I think that's something we'll continue to work on. And some people expressed concerns about gaps and proficiencies in some disciplines. Also, our aspirational goal was to have not just a twelfth grade portrait of a graduate, but also a fourth and eighth grade portrait of a graduate, and there's some more work to do there. In the additional insights thing in this area, leveling up and proficiencies has seemed to have a negative effect on some students. It's unclear if everyone can explain and internalize the portrait of a graduate and proficiency work in simple terms, right? So you know, people really understand it when you ask a custodian or you ask an eighth grader, what's this portrait of a graduate, right? And when they can explain it to you, then then you've been successful. So that's that's an area to work on. And and some people expressed that this work be less eddy and more action focused. Okay, so that's the first chunk.
Peter, sorry. Ten responses to this?
Yeah, so six school committee members and four administrators, so it's. Well, it's six out of ten school committee members, so sixty percent. And and four administrators. I have to do that math, not in my head, right? So.
But it's it's a sufficiently large sample to be meaningful, is what I'm saying.
I don't know that it's statistically meaningful, but but there are people in a variety of leadership roles in the district, so it's worth, it's worth sharing.
Yeah.
Right? And then we talked about this at the my evaluation and advisory meeting. We have other sort of much greater data sets connected to other surveys that aren't specifically focused on the three district improvement things, but but are connected.
Okay.
So teacher leaderships or those positions, the I Ls and the S E Ls, a lot of folks saying they're impactful and helpful, they bury somebody in building. The I Ls in particular were well implemented. High school science and math was important. It was also important in framing all efforts. The middle school, again, a lot of work around I Ls and S E Ls, and it was impactful. The elementary school, they they started calling it the H I T T, high impact teacher teams.
Yeah.
Right? So it's a different language, but the same same idea. Growth areas, so people in this group said it's important that we survey all teachers. Someone raised the issue, we have an over reliance on stipends. Need for hands-on support in high school English and social studies. Better communicate roles. What happens when roles are short circuited? So if something should go through the I Ls and it gets brought in some other direction, how can that be problematic? Questions back to the roles need to be exactly the same in all three schools. So that's an ongoing tension, right? And my perception is they should be aligned, but each building developmentally is different because of who they serve, so they may not have to be in lockstep, but they should be aligned. And then some issues around sort of the tension of, as we increase access, are we also increasing or not increasing rigor? And I think the embedded assumption there is is we need to do both better. Additional insights were, we need a better feedback loop and more regular check-ins on the district improvement and school improvement plans. Some folks expressed the need for additional aisle training, that aligned efforts are important. And then this is sort of outside of the the window of these three years of district improvement plans, but but somebody expressed, there are multiple people expressed real optimism about excellent principal selection and their potential. So I think I think that's great. The last one is community engagement. There's a sense that we've had, and again, there are positives and negatives on all of these, right? So I'll talk about some of the positives around communication and then some some growth areas. Stronger average in communication, power, school and parents' where use is improved. Sorry, there's a typo there. Strong community collaborations, improvement in outreach and communication with multilingual learners. So we're going to start using the phrase multilingual learners as opposed to English language learners. Because it's it's more of an asset description than a than a deficit description, right? So just so you know what that shift is. And Monument continues its long tradition of engaging the community to support students, whether that's through internships, scholarships, or other connections and opportunities. There's universal, I'll just be blunt, frustration or disgust with the district website. We're we're, we've signed a contract and are moving forward. Some design ideas on that, and we'll be convening appropriate staff in different phases to share input on that. So let's move it along. Someone shared that trust has eroded, there's a lack of faith, and questions about our administration and the school committee too close. Need for additional growth and then the perennial need for an effective counter. Community engagement, additional insights, continue to refine and have a clear communication plan. Have a clear and simple website. Better use and share climate surveys and do it all three buildings, report out and report back quickly. We have a little bit of a pattern of doing a little more survey in the high school than we do in the other two buildings, so to try to balance that out. The importance of looking at multiple data points from multiple perspectives. We have data sets that are quite conflicting, right? There's some data sets that say parts of things are going wonderfully. There are other data sets that say parts of things aren't going very well. And and the neat thing about having them or multiple ones is to look at them all together. Continue to make progress, and then the last one was to hold an orientation for new school committee members and share foundational documents, including the district improvement plan at the beginning of their of their tenure. And I would infer from that comment also that that is folks change from subcommittee to subcommittee. Like a formal orientation may not be important, but but sharing some informal context could also be important. So those are my sort of gleanings from from the responses. You also have the raw data in front of you. I think, Steve, if it makes sense to for you to open this up to some dialogue among the.
Questions and concerns, comments?
To be really helpful, so thank you. I appreciate that this was done. I guess, given the reflections and given the fact that the the new district improvement plan has already been done, are there any changes or additions or kind of molfires that you want to put on on kind of what the goal was going forward?
No, man, I'll go back and look at it again. I think there may be. I mean, the the communications thing we've been talking about for a long time, right? And I'm happy that there's some growth and I acknowledge that there's some more growth. And I'm happy that there's some growth, and I acknowledge that there's more growth to happen. But I think the bigger implications might be in the process we use around the updated district improvement plan rather than the, the actual plan itself, but, but I'll, I'll go through it again with this. Um, the, the, I was, I kept extending the deadline because I wanted to get more responses. Uh, so I put together this document today, so I didn't really have time to then digest this recent document that I put and run it against the other one, but, but I'll do that. But I think the, the big implication is not do this at the end of three years, but do it quarterly or, or twice a year uh, as, as we're going. And, and then I think the secondary implication is as we do surveys, uh, turn around and share the results of those surveys and, and use them in in district conversations or school-based conversations. Uh, ideally within a couple of weeks of when they're, when they're completed. Um, so I, I think those were the big ones. I mean, some smaller ones, we, we need to uh, uh, get the portrait of the graduate work out and accessible and, and continue that work and, and look at what a, a fourth and eighth grader one looks like. Uh, uh, we need to make strong connections to that, to the curriculum work that we're doing. Uh, and, and that's in process. So a lot of what we're doing, I feel, I'm good about, but I will take another look.
But what happens next with this, this stuff?
With the, the two thousand and one to two thousand and twenty, or two thousand and twenty-one? I mean, it's, it, I, I think we, we use this summary to inform our future one, but, but the last three years we sort of put to, put to rest. And, and, and we look at our, our current work with more focused lenses and, and use it to frame discussions going forward, right? You like, you're not going to have to remind me, in three months I'll come back and say, we said we're going to do this in the district improvement plan, and then we're two major goals. Uh, where are we in relation to those goals? And hopefully I'll be able to circle. We, we talked a lot about a website, we've got a great website, a great calendar, and, and it's not all buttoned up, but, but it's a step in the right direction, and, and we talked a lot about learning. And we've done these seven things and supported it in professional development, and teachers are embracing that. And then, and then we sort of spot checked a couple of sixth graders and see if they understand what the portrait of a graduate is and what they're, what they're working towards. Any ones?
Just curious, when we um, find something to create a website, will whoever does that manage it, or how will we?
No, so likely not. So um, within the district, we have a number of people that, that have an additional role, a speculative role called webmaster, so there's one in each school building. Um, and um, and, and one in the, one in the district office. So we're going to be working uh, with those people, but, but at the same time, we're going to try to set some real guardrails and, and boundaries and have some um, um, the, and I think this has happened several times, and chances, and it happened more times. We, we start at a certain place, and over time, each school building goes in their own directions. And, and really, the, the dropdown menus across the three buildings in the district should be pretty standardized, right? I mean, high schools have athletics in ways that the middle school doesn't, but short of that, things should be quite similar. Uh, but then, within that, how the content is shared can actually be a little bit uh, different. Uh, so, so some work there, but we'll, we'll manage it uh, in, internally ourselves. The other thing that we've seen in a lot of other sites is sites that are dynamic enough, so right away it figures out who you are. And while the content may largely be the same, um, if, if you're a, a parent, some things are, are highlighted. And if you're a teacher, other things may be highlighted and similarly if, if you're a student, right? So parents and staff make care a lot about policy. Students and parents may care much more about uh, calendar events, uh, curriculum, things like that.
I'm less concerned with guardrails and more concerned with requirements. The things that need to be on there all the time, and things aren't on there, there, there needs to be a good. Teacher makes sure.
Yeah, we just, yeah, someone has to be on it all the time.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's what, that's well said. Uh, so, a- a- and, and as we do this, we, I, I think that some group of people will work on it. We'll come back to you with some sort of additional drafts and proposals. Uh, and, and we'll do a whole, whole community thing. From that communications plan of like a year and a half ago, it's very clear what we need to do. But, but translating that into, into a new website and, and getting stapled or feedback on drafts of it.
But I, I think there's a couple of things that it's, it's got to be user-friendly.
Yeah.
I want to look up what's going on tonight at the high school. I don't want to have to do seven clicks and, and four different spots to find it and then find out it's not updated.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, it just has to be a lot better, a lot easier to use.
Yeah, I would agree, and I think that everybody agrees with that. We, we've looked at, at dozens, maybe more scores of other websites. Uh, I think we'll be able to look together something that's thoughtful. The, the other thing we're doing is, is we're using Parent Square, which is our primary communications tool as the website host, so it's all integrated. Uh, and, and we might have found sort of more interesting or sexier ones, but integrated and functional. Uh, I, I think we'll end up with one that's very attractive and elegant, but integrated and functional is, is more. Yeah, I agree. Okay. Any other comments, reactions? Thanks, thanks for uh, taking the time uh, to do that. Open-ended questions are hard. Uh, so the, the next one is, is a little update on, on where we are with the diversity, equity, inclusion and, and belonging um, role and work. Um, and, and I want to start a little bit with sort of talking through some of what we're trying to do and, and then talk about where we are in the search and, and what my plan is uh, going forward. So when I look at this work, and a lot of this is articulated in the Stoke Report, uh, I think there, there are uh, a, a, a number of chunks, really four main chunks. Uh, one is, is staff professional development and support. One is student training and support. Another one are uh, affinity groups that support uh, particular students in, in particular areas. So it might be a, a, a GSA or eighth grade alliance, it might be a BIPOC group. And there's some structural shifts we want to make there, so we'd like to have um, at least two staff co-advising each of those groups. So there's some depth there in case somebody gets sick or, or transitions to another role. Uh, a- and then to have that be complemented by community partners, whether they're local to our three towns or, or they're, or they're more broadly connected to, to Massachusetts, but more nationally. Uh, a- and then, and then the last two were just sort of interconnected. We're working really hard to build uh, school councils in all of the buildings. Uh, and those that sort of waxed and waned over time. Uh, a- a- and also have some family, family groups, right? So, so that's how I see uh, the work. Um, in the, in the short term, uh, we've reached out to the Department of Justice and their spirit program uh, around some opportunities at the middle school. Uh, and that came out from a strong parent recommendation and, and community partners. So we'll share some updates on that soon. Uh, we're continuing to work with families and lots of contacts. Uh, and you'll hear in a little bit that we're, we're um, endlessly working on policies that, that overlap uh, with, with these domains. Um, uh, and we'll share some updates on that, and, and then some likely opportunities around the police M O U and some other things, which we're making some progress on. Uh, from a, a position standpoint, uh, the, the number and depth and relevance and quality of the candidates for a D E I V position uh, lead me to declare it's, it's a failed search, right? That, 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 we're not finding the person with a whole bunch of different skillsets and we need to move this work forward. Uh, so I'm recommending now that we uh, go to Plan B, which is to move from a person at this moment to a, a collection of consultants. Uh, the, the downside on that is there's not one person who's with us full-time. The upside is we've not been able to find one person with multiple uh, skillsets to do this work. Uh, so uh, we'll, we'll have um, several different consultants working on it. So they may have greater expertise in each of those subareas, but supporting them and their work in being coherent uh, will, will be a challenge. So, so that's something we'll, we'll be working on. Uh, we're, we're receiving some support uh, from someone we've worked with before. Uh, and I'll continue to reach out uh, to him. Uh, and, and, and we'll come back with, with a more detailed plan, but, but this is where we're moving. I'm confident that, that we have enough momentum uh, to, to get this work to stick. Questions, comments?
The consultant strategy that has a budgetary impact.
Yeah, I mean, e- e- everything is a budgetary impact. In, in, in simplest terms, I, I am going to recommend repurposing what the salary and benefits of, of one person would have been and, and, and divvying that up to, to support uh, the work. Uh, uh, but, but I want to be a little cagey about that because I don't want four consultants each assume they get one quarter of, of what the position was budgeted for.
So in the, the, since the lack of a, an individual person or a consultant, what's happening to the work on D E I V?
Well, that, I, that's what I tried to just explain, right?
So, so there's not really any action now until this person, this, the consultants are in place?
No, no, I mean, that's, this, this work is ongoing, right? So last week Jake and I met with five parents and, and.
Okay.
And did a big discussion around how to activate the Department of Justice.
Okay.
In this program, and, and in the first two days of professional development in varying degrees in each of the building, uh, principals and teachers discuss this. And, and as they're working on, on uh, what started as essentially syllabi or expectations in each class, um, broader issues around D E I V.
Good, okay.
Are connected. And so, so there's, there's lots of work ongoing. Uh, in, in the coming weeks, we'll, we'll identify and decide contracts with consultants.
I remember last year I talked to a student who said that the lack of an individual was, you know, the fact that we didn't have one, and then we did. Um, and so there were problems there, and she said she hoped that this uh, would, the work would start. And so that's why I asked if that actually, the work is starting.
Yeah, very much so. Other comments or reactions?
Yes, just with, with a kind of collection of consultants, it could be super disjointed. So I guess I would just hope that the affinity groups and the parents that are very involved and students, um, whether it's a sub or some other way, that feedback is continuously kind of coming back to make sure that the right things are being addressed.
Yeah, no, I mean, I feel like I totally agree, that's the lesson of the day. Create really thoughtful feedback loops in all these different areas. Uh, and set clear goals and projections. Okay. So Chris? Yeah, so I have a little um, update. Rob's been doing a lot of work on policy along with the policy subcommittee, and he's been our primary liaison to our attorney. Um, so he writes me a little memo, but then I, I share in part with this group. Uh, and it just so happens, every Thursday night, Rob's got a gig somewhere, so. That's why, that's why he's not, he's not joining us. Um, so he reached out to the attorney um, about the um, changes connected to Title IX as recommended by Mass. And the attorney responded that R A C and A C A are fine as they are written. She proposed new language for A C A G, which is in your PACD. And she recommended the school committee not adopt A C A R and A C dash R, so they're not included in our PACD. She was silent on A C J B, so it'll be reviewed as a, at a future date. Uh, and these are new policies recommended by Mass and reviewed by the district lawyer. Uh, I leave it to the school committee to refer the policies to the policy subcommittee or conduct a first reading tonight, right? So occasionally, when there's something that's driven by federal or state law and it's, it's advantageous for us to adapt it quickly, we do that. But procedurally, I think our preference is uh, if there's not a sense of urgency to, to refer it to the policy subcommittee, to then refer it back to the whole group. Correct. Cory, do you want to? Well, yeah.
I, I think for the federal laws that are the standard that the attorney sent us, I feel comfortable moving those through without convening the policy committee.
So which ones do we want to? We have some second readings, some first readings, which ones do we want to do tonight?
Um. So that means you want to report on all these ones that are on the agenda?
Well, so A C B and pregnancy, those are all second readings.
So let's do those.
Those two of those.
Yep.
So do I have a motion to accept policies A C A B and K I U? I'm going, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, just go. These are all second readings. All of them, Bill?
Hi.
Uh, Jason?
Hi.
Bonnie?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Diana? Cory?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Okay, what first readings do we want to? Obviously, there's no vote on first readings, but which ones are?
So the attorney recommended A C A, I'm sorry, A C and A C A.
Are, are you okay with this, Cory?
Yep.
So those are the only two we're going to do as first readings, to come back in our next meeting.
I think so, and then we can leave A C.
A G.
G A or A G, whatever it is.
Yeah.
It's written differently every year. On the policy itself, it says A C G A. Um, leave that for a policy meeting.
So the only two tonight we're considering as first readings are A C and A C A, and they will come back to our next meeting or second meeting. If you have any concerns, comments, corrections, you want to say now, that's fine. Otherwise, contact Cory and Peter and Rob. Okay.
Do we need a motion for the rest of the votes here, just at the discretion of the chair?
Just go ahead and say it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that it, Cory, on policy, other than we need to come up with a meeting yet?
Uh, yeah, there's just another one that got submitted, the J J E, which is the fundraising.
Yes, yes.
I, I would, I would refer that to the policy, and we come back to the meeting for a first reading on that.
That was my intent.
Okay.
That's fine, we will automatically do that. Um, buildings and grounds.
Yeah. So, so one other thing that, that was going on in sort of policy, but not quite policy, was the, the M O U within the police department. So we have a draft of that. We made some progress on that, it's significant community, and what, and thanks to the community people who did that is being reviewed by our attorney. Uh, then we'll also take it over to a, a state office, and then we'll, we'll bring that back to policy.
There's one more policy I think that went along with the M O U, is it K E C, I think?
Right.
And we're waiting on that one too.
And that's also been referred to our attorney.
And then go to the policy subcommittee and then come back here.
Correct.
Oh, that's our attorney.
Uh, so we, 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 I say our attorney, we have like three attorneys. We, we have a, a relationship with the firm Murphy, Hesse, Toomey and Lehane. And um, and the Uh, Kevin Brezner hand is one previously with Regina Tate, who's since retired. Uh, Felicia.
Vasu Devon.
Vasu Devon uh is another one and then Alicia.
Saint Florian.
Right, Saint Florian. So so really the the three of them. Um, the the first one tends to weigh mostly on policy things and and matters that may be litigious. And and the other two uh more on on special education law and and specific items connected to students.
And we've used them for some years?
Uh, I I I think upwards of my my whole time there.
Since Phil Grinchamper.
Since Phil Grinchamper.
Yeah, which is a long time.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else on policy? Buildings and grounds.
Having none.
Superintendents evaluation is meeting. Cory, I'll ask you to do that.
Yeah, basically, we met earlier this week and um Peter presented us with a large amount of evidence. So various um surveys that have come in, uh timelines, data points, et cetera. And I think uh the next step will be for us to start individually filling out the actual rubric.
We met um earlier today. Um, it was our first inaugural meeting, the FY twenty six budget. Um, with Sharon's guidance, we put together a pretty good calendar, predominantly similar to what um we've done in the past. Um, one interesting tweak is um driven by a lot of reasons, most importantly because we have three new principals. Is we're going to do the the major building reviews all at one time on October twenty fourth. Um, and I bring that up for a couple of reasons. One, that if if you if non-finance committee members are going to attend a meeting, that would probably be the one to to be at. Um, and I've pitched to the chair, we pitched to the chair, that if there's not a heavy agenda that evening. Uh, or necessary agenda of the school committee meeting, maybe we cancel our regular school committee meeting, have an extended finance committee meeting when we do that. So but that will depend on what comes down the the bike in terms of the school committee stuff.
What was the date of that session?
October twenty fourth. And we're planning on starting at four thirty. Um, whether we have a school committee meeting or not and going through and really doing a deep dive at the school level. Um, and you can look at that. I mean, obviously, the operational stuff is the first one, all the all the, did this go in the regular package, Sharon, or was this just in the?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. So you guys have that. Um, you know, keep an eye on all of them, but I wanted to have like that particularly important meeting.
And if it's okay, I'll mention this again, we're we're planning to do two budget one-on-one sessions that are geared towards staff. And community members, so they have contacts for how our budget works. And we'll be sharing dates for that uh early next week. Uh, and and then invitations, so that folks can go. There it'll be the same session twice, so you don't need to come twice, just the one that works within one schedule. And uh, school committee members don't need to come unless you want to, that we thought some of the finance committee members might come. Good, because they can share some contacts.
What we're really trying to avoid, which is fine if it happens, but we'd really rather not happen. Because with the budget, have all kinds of finance subcommittee meetings and either staff or mostly staff. At the, you know, eleventh hour come to us and say, well, you didn't do this, you didn't do that. We we'd like you to get, you know, understand how the budget process works, get to us early, have the discussion, so we don't have surprises at the end.
No, and 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 really, from a staff perspective, the best thing would be to to get to your principals, your principals, starting to build.
Goes with the CHF plan, coming to the school committee at the end, kind of follows things up because we want to go back in respect of the principals and 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 have their opinions. Personnel.
Yeah, so the a a great personnel uh report, several new staff, Robin Aloysi, Susan Fiacco, Amy Taylor. And Carrery Terrell, uh, all all joining us, uh, middle school and and elementary school positions. Uh, we welcome them. Um, and and then a couple of new power professionals, Chris Coons and Joe Napolitano. Um, and then um Summer and and many coaching uh appointments.
Questions?
Um, I don't know if this is the right time, but we just hearing from especially the elementary and middle school about the problems of hiring parents. I know this is not just our district, almost every district, but I also know that we increased the pace significantly. We just went through that process within the last six months. Um, but uh, you know, obviously, they're critical to our uh running a a good uh school. So I don't know if that's something that continues, if we need to look at increasing rates more. Um, I don't know if that requires opening up open bargaining, but um, you know, they're critical to the buildings. So I don't I don't know how to go on forward, how to address it, but I think it does need to be addressed.
Yeah, one of the things I thought of when Cory brought up, Jason, is is a job fair. Let's just take a night, advertise the heck out of it, have people come to one of the schools and have the principals or staff there that. See, you know, people who are looking for jobs, people who are still looking for jobs. I I also agree that, you know, if that doesn't work, we're, we have to figure out why we can't do this, why why we can't fill the positions.
Do we advert, do we advertise them?
Constantly, yeah.
It's what we need.
Uh, a whole whole number of things. So Sh- Shoppers Guide, Broker Ego, uh, School Spring, which is. It's a little education specific, right? So uh, not everybody would necessarily know it unless they were a school person looking for the school position. The other thing somebody mentioned, we'll we'll do what, now that kids are back in school and and families are settled, that there's some potential employees. In in our families. Uh, and and we'll do another call um for that. Uh, the sec- the administrative assistant position at the elementary school has been another position. It's been quite hard to fill. Um, it's a it's challenging, right? And 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 I think your suggestion to look at compensation is a good one. Maybe we bring that back to the negotiations committee to to look at.
Are they all benefit eligible positions?
Yes.
So I think that's an important thing to highlight.
I was just gonna say that Cory, your benefits are really good, so.
And then um hours, especially if it syncs up with what children, the children are doing already. But then the other thing is um, any job training that can be highlighted, I think would be important as well.
And we have a nice recent history of of some some paraprofessionals stay and do their whole careers as a paraprofessional. And some other paraprofessionals start as paraprofessionals and and step into other roles, including. Three teachers in the last year and a half.
Jason, thanks for bringing it up. We can ring our hands, but the video for six months, it's kind of still.
Yeah.
Um, business operations, the FY twenty six budget timeline, Sharon, you want to add anything?
No.
Okay, and the class of twenty twenty four accountability?
Can I talk to that?
Yes.
Yeah, so what what I'd like to do on that is uh just appoint a little myself, appoint a little ad hoc subcommittee to look at that. Like dig in a little deeper. Sharon's done some analysis. Uh, I'd like to have another conversation around it and then in a a future meeting, bring back the the results of that.
Makes sense. Um, all business, Jason or Peter of the MSBA?
Yeah, I can start. We had it two weeks ago. Um, and uh both our architect as well as our SCANS, our. Own rep, um, have been going forward. Architect basically is almost completed both new building designs, gone through that exercise. Um, since then, in the last last two weeks, um, they've been um focusing more on uh what potential. Significant um addition renovations to the current building are. Um, so hopefully the next meeting, which is uh two weeks from this coming Wednesday, um, have a thorough uh evaluation of all three options. Because we're getting down to, you know, end of November, beginning of December, picking the preferred solution. Um, they've done also, they updated us on significant uh traffic, different traffic options with the new school, including uh maybe rotaries. Um, at given the intersections, a secondary road that parallels Route Seven that connects at the um. Uh, where mine by road connects to Route Seven off of there, past the greenhouses. Um, so they've gone into a lot of different things. And they also, they're thoroughly exploring the actual grounds. Uh, from a cost perspect- perspective regarding the two new options, one into the hill versus two at parking lot, basically. Um, and diving deeper into the potential costs or savings on each of those sites to see if. Uh, it'll move the needle one way or another um from a cost perspective. Um, as far as, you know, moving ground and blacktop and everything associated with it. Anything else to add to that?
No, I I I think that's good. We're hoping to schedule some meetings with the Department of Transportation around some. Entrance and egress possibilities and include potentially the um the rotaries. Uh, and uh, it's we're, I think, in a really exciting time in the project, things are going to start coming together. From from both the the design and uh and a cost perspective. That's good.
And last thing I forgot, there'll be another committee forum coming up sometime in September, early October. I'll send all of those, you know.
And 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 the other thing, they're going to do a little bit of outreach at the um the various uh school open houses and meetings. So anytime people are coming into our schools, there'll there'll be a table stacked by a couple knowledgeable people who. Who'll share information with people who are who live there.
Good, thank you very much. Um, this is stone policy, uh, new business, the policy KJE, we prefer that to policy subcommittee. Any public comments?
So for people online, uh, if you want to uh raise something, uh, raise your hand and and we'll recognize it.
Something really quickly on the account update in the subcommittee that's being created. It's for twenty twenty four, but I think. The committee also needs to look at some twenty twenty five discrepancies as well. So I would just make sure that's on the list to do.
So no public comments, no, uh, unanimous consent, we are, thank you very much.